Good evening, everyone. Thank you for coming this evening. This is Taxation Finance Economic Development Committee. I'm Carl Stokes. I'm chair of the committee. To my far left is Councilwoman Helen Holton of the 8th Council District, who is a member of the committee. To my immediate left is Council President Bernard C. Jack Young, who is also the lead sponsor on the City Council Bill 16-0627, which we're about to hear. The bill is an ordinance concerning property tax credits, city supplement to homeowners' tax credit program, for the purpose of establishing a city supplement to the state homeowners' property tax credit program, defining certain terms, imposing certain limitations, conditions, and qualifications for credit eligibility, and providing for the amount and administration of the credit. We also have reports in from three city agencies. The Department of Finance. But before, rather than read the Department of Finance report, I'm going to ask them to -- are you talking to me? They're going to speak to it in just a moment. From the Housing Department, we have -- Department of Housing Community Development has reviewed City Council Bill 16-0627. For the purpose of establishing a city supplement to the state homeowners' property tax credit program, defining certain terms, imposing certain limitations, conditions, qualifications for credit eligibility, and providing for the amount and administration of the credit. If enacted, this bill would provide additional property tax relief for homeowners who qualify for the state homeowners' tax credit program or over the age of 62, have lived in a home for at least 10 years, and have a combined income of less than $40,000. The state homeowners' tax credit program provides a tax credit for eligible homeowners with a gross household income of less than $60,000. The additional savings from both the tax credit program could be a way to keep more people out of tax sale by providing additional revenue to pay taxes where the bills maintain property. However, the fiscal impact of the implementation of the local tax credit program would have to be evaluated by the Department of Finance. The Department of Housing Community Development respectfully defers to the Department of Finance on the passage of City Council Bill 16-0627. And from the Department of Law, this is the appropriate bill to create a local supplement to the homeowners' property tax credit. The Law Department approves this bill for form and legal sufficiency. I will ask Council President Bernard C. Jack Young to now speak to the bill.
Thank you, Chairman Stokes. First of all, thank you for calling this hearing today on my bill for the local supplement to the state's homeowners' property tax credit. This local tax credit will be available to seniors who receive state's homeowner property tax credit and are over the age of 62, have owned their homes for 10 years or more, and have an income of less than $40,000 a year. Baltimore City will be the 14th county in Maryland to offer a local supplement to the homeowners' tax credit. We're joining our neighbors in Baltimore County and Arundel Howard Prince George County in offering a local supplemental tax credit. This tax credit will use a formula based on the home's value, homeowners' income, and other tax credit received to calculate the local supplement to the homeowners' tax credit. Our seniors are facing many challenges and often live on limited income, fixed income. This tax credit can help homeowners stay in their homes and out of poverty. Every year, I have two seniors opposed him. And the biggest problem that comes up is the property tax and the water bill for our seniors. And I did some research, and then I had my staff to do some research, on what we can do to help them. We give tax breaks to just about everybody else. Now let's give a tax break to our seniors. The last tax break that I think the mayor did, it did not include the seniors. The seniors were not eligible. So this will make our seniors eligible. If you want us to support tax breaks for corporations and for everybody else, and there's no pushback from Finance, from Housing, or the Law Department, then don't give me pushback on this for our seniors. They have been in the struggle long enough. They have paid their taxes to keep city government rolling, and they have done everything. They have done their part. They have the rising cost of medicine, the rising cost of water bills, the rising cost of rents. And let's give them a break. Those that own their homes, let's keep them in their homes by making sure that they get this break. That every other county around us, I just named a few, but it's other counties, small counties, that are giving this tax breaks to their seniors. We owe it to them. So let's do the right thing and get this bill passed so that our seniors could get, take advantage of this extra money to help them along. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. President. We've been joined by Councilman Eric Costello, 11th Council District. And failed to mention earlier that Angela Gibson from the Mayor's Department is also, Mayor's Office is also with us, Councilman. Thank you. We're going to ask Finance, who has a report and analysis as well as a recommended amendment.
Thank you, Chairman Stokes. Council President Young, members of the council. I'm Bill Voorhees with the Finance Department. And while I'll stand by everything in the report, there's a couple of points I'd like to make. One is the estimated cost to be $8.48 million. We are proposing an amendment which would reduce that down to about $4.56 million. Now, this will not impact what homeowners receive, but we're really, act as a floor. It will cut off years. And I can distribute that amendment.
You finished? Are you still talking?
There was also one other thing. And that is, I would like to raise the issue on the 30-day effective date. Now, because the State Department of Assessments and Taxation will have to do that, I'm assuming that they have agreed to that date. I don't know. That's a pretty tight timeline to implement a tax system. So that may be, that's a technical issue, but I want to raise that in the meeting here.
So the date of implementation?
The 30, it takes effect the 30th day after the date it is enacted. We might want to look at that again to make sure Estat can do that.
That's up to the chair.
Right.
If the chair wants. That's up to the chair. If the chair wants to make the effective date by working with Finance?
Well, we don't, we don't do it.
Oh, Estat?
Yeah, Estat. The State Department of Assessments and Taxation will administer this tax.
Okay.
So I'm just, I'm looking out for maybe unique, I'm looking out for the State Department of Assessments and Taxations and their timeline to make sure this all works right.
I'm quite sure they work along with us.
Okay. Councilwoman Holton.
Hi, Mr. Voorhees. I was looking at your amendment. And if you could just go back through that, why you have put your amendment in this way.
Well, what we're, what we're trying to do, and this--
I don't know if everyone is aware. Would you speak to your amendment directly?
Correct.
Matter of fact, why don't you read through your amendment, and then speak to the rationale for it?
Basically, the amendment says the city supplemental in Section D, amount of supplemental credit. The city supplemental tax credit for an eligible dwelling is, and we've deleted the total real property tax on the dwelling, less the property tax credit granted for the dwelling under the state tax property article 9-104. And then we added, after that deletion, the total real property tax on the dwelling after the application of any other applicable tax credits, less, and that's the end of our amendment.
And what is the impact of that?
Well, the way it's originally written, what we're trying to do is harmonize it with what the state does with the homeowners' tax credit, the state homeowners. And there's a hierarchy of tax credits. They're typically applied. The first one are all the city tax credits. They're applied first. And then the state homeowners' tax credit gets applied after that. And then we envision this city homeowner supplement being applied after that. If we just put it out there, there's, it would be applied to the whole tax liability, which would generate a refund. The tax credit would actually be higher than the taxes owed. And we want to eliminate that piece of it. And that would eliminate about $4 million.
$4 million.
Four, let's see, was it? It would drop it from $4.8 million down to $4.56, the cost of the credit.
So the cost of the credit would go from $4.8 million to--
Four, no, it'd go from $8.48 to $4.56. Now, homeowners would not be impacted by this other than the fact that they wouldn't get refunds above and beyond what their tax liability is.
Okay. So it's to put it in line with how credits are applied?
Correct.
Okay.
And to answer your question about Estat, the county, which is you guys, shall notify the Department of the enactment of the local supplement and any change in the local supplement in accordance with any guideline specified by the department, and will go on the next tax bill.
I rate, Council President, I just raised that to make sure this all works right.
We have it from the Maryland Property Tax Code. Thank you.
Okay.
Thanks, Mr. President.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Voorhees.
Any questions?
Any other comments, questions at this point from my colleagues? We'll take the public testimony now, please. Robin Jacobs.
Good evening. Thank you for inviting me to speak. I'm speaking on behalf of Community Law Center and is the co-chair and founder of the Tax Sale Work Group.
Bring the mic down a little, please.
Oh, sure.
Thank you.
We would like to express our support of this tax credit to provide an additional tax break to protect vulnerable homeowners in Baltimore City from falling into tax sale. I'm here to just provide an overview of the Tax Sale Work Group and the community context for this bill. The work group was formed by me at Community Law Center as part of the Baltimore Homeownership Preservation Coalition. I actually formed it coming out of a lawsuit against a large owner of vacant and abandoned properties in Baltimore, and he had acquired all the properties through tax sale. And the more I looked into the system, the more I realized we need to just prevent people from falling into tax sale. So we formed this group, which represents a diverse set of stakeholders, a few of whom you'll hear from, to seek a better system that does three things. Gets the city its revenue that it needs, protects the city's most vulnerable homeowners, and returns vacant properties back into productive use. The group has had a lot of success so far. Last year, we were able to pass state legislation that led to a reduction of homeowners in tax sale by 40% this year. Other members of the group have created various programs, clinics to help taxpayers, pro bono programs to represent homeowners in tax sale, a loan program. And we've also just developed an expertise about tax sale, and we share information about the system and its consequences. Tax credits really came to our attention as a key way of preventing tax sale for our most vulnerable homeowners. The problem with the tax sale system as it currently stands is that it creates a speculative and predatory real estate market in Baltimore City. It replaces homeowners with homeless, and it replaces well-maintained residences with vacant and nuisance properties. It is really a system that's a penny wise and a pound foolish. So I encourage you, as you look at this bill, to not just look at any short-term issues, but the long-term cost to the city of tax sale. An expert analysis we had prepared for the lawsuit found that 51 of this tax sale purchaser's properties cost $2.5 million in just six neighborhoods. If you multiply that across the city, the economic damages the tax sale causes to the city are far exceed the costs. In terms of public safety, there's a large cost to the city because of vacant properties. So I would just encourage you to look at those broad costs to the city. And I'll defer to the other members of the Tax Sale Work Group to tell you a few more about those issues. I've also prepared written testimony, which I'll submit, which includes some studies about the costs of, the true costs of vacant and tax sale properties to Baltimore City. Thank you.
Thank you. And I just mentioned that the council did pass a bill earlier this year that gives better, stronger notification to folk whose properties could be in danger of going to--
Thank you. We do appreciate that as well.
Thank you for your support. Thank you. Any questions, comments from? No? Thank you. Cora Stretch, please. Is Ms. Stretch here? Or am I mispronouncing the name?
Cora?
Cora Stretch.
Oh, she's forgotten her name. Okay.
Hi.
Hi.
Thank you, President Young and Chairperson Stokes, for convening this. My name's Cara Stretch. I'm the Director of Housing Counseling--
Sarah, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry?
It's Sarah. Is that--
Cara.
Cara.
Sorry.
I apologize.
I speak fast. I have to slow down.
Got it.
I'm the Director of Housing Counseling at St. Ambrose Housing Need Center. And I'm also a member of the Baltimore City Tax Sale Group that Robin just spoke about. I wanted to provide an example of a homeowner that we work with. St. Ambrose has been a leader in providing foreclosure prevention work since the '70s. You can't hear me? Slow down. Slow down.
Slow down.
We have been a leader in providing foreclosure prevention work since the '70s. So we've seen a lot of Baltimore's most vulnerable homeowners. I want to speak about one specifically. Her name's Ms. Anderson. She's been working with us since 2009. Her situation was pretty complex. She's 70. She's a widow. She lives in northeast Baltimore. Through counseling, we've been able to untangle some of the issues that were complicating her ability to stay in her home. But unfortunately, she's on a fixed income of $1,200 a month, and her mortgage payment's almost half of that. So she does get the property tax credit right now, but an expansion would obviously make it easier for her to age in place gracefully. So it's based on our extensive work with homeowners facing foreclosure, especially those trying to age in place, that we respectfully request a favorable report. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it. No list. I'm sorry. We gave it to you. We have Claudia Wilson-Randle, please.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
My name is Claudia Wilson-Randle. I'm the Director of Housing Counseling and Operations at Southeast CDC. I, too, wanted to draw your attention to the homeowners affected by the tax sale foreclosure process. I am the co-chair of the Baltimore Housing, Senior Housing Work Group, which is a collaboration of the Association of Baltimore Area Grantmakers and the Baltimore Homeownership Preservation Coalition, as well as a member of the Tax Sale Work Group. And I, I think this is a much bigger issue than simply helping the homeowners affected by this. As you know, Baltimore has a very limited supply of affordable housing. And our best strategy is to make sure that grandparents and great-grandparents can remain in their homes and remain in their neighborhoods. We don't, we are not, we as community development corporations and partners in the community don't have enough resources to build enough affordable housing. Our seniors are consistent and stable forces in the community, and we need to figure out ways to have them age in place. Southeast CDC is one of only two local providers of also reverse mortgage counseling in the city of Baltimore. And each year, we see people facing tax sale foreclosure due to taxes and insurance. And we also now see reverse mortgage companies now foreclosing on homeowners for non-payment of taxes. So this is not just an issue of the person, but it's also an issue of the communities affected by that person losing their home to tax sale foreclosure. Last year, a client came to us in tears for the situation that she found herself in. When our counselor met with her, she was nearly unable to speak. She had been a teacher for more than 20 years in Baltimore City. And she had recently lost her husband. But in her grief, her voice was nearly inaudible. And she told us that she had a reverse mortgage, but she was now facing losing her home due to taxes. And my question to you is, where should she go? And what happens to that house? Our city lacks any response to that. And what happens to most of those properties sold in tax is they become a larger stock of vacant and abandoned homes in our community. So we've really got to think about this. And we've got to think seriously about the long-term impact, not just that simply losing some revenue in one year, because it has a long-term impact in our communities. Having worked with many low-income homeowners struggling to remain in their home, we have found a tremendous benefit from the state homeowners' property tax credit. Other jurisdictions around Maryland have adopted similar supplemental local tax credits successfully. And that's what we're looking to do here. So I hope you will support this bill. Thank you.
Thank you. Members? Thank you. Ellen Riddle.
Good evening, Chairman Stokes and members of the committee. My name is Ellen Riddle. I'm a staff attorney with Maryland Volunteer Lawyers Service here in Baltimore. MVLS is the oldest and the largest provider of pro bono legal services for low-income Marylanders across the state. Approximately 26% of our cases opened last year involved some sort of consumer issue, including foreclosure and tax sale. Since 2008, we've provided legal representation to homeowners facing foreclosure. And in 2014, we expanded our representation to include tax sale foreclosure because there was just an overwhelming demand. We've been a part of the Tax Sale Work Group since 2013, and we've worked side by side with all of the members of the work group to improve the tax sale process and make sure that our most vulnerable citizens are protected. In doing that, we have partnered with the Pro Bono Resource Center, another pro bono organization, to host six tax sale prevention clinics each year in Baltimore. And I just want to share with you some of the statistics from those clinics last year. Last year, our volunteer attorneys assisted 151 homeowners at risk of tax sale at six clinics. Of these homeowners, 67% reported a household income under $20,000. 51% were seniors. After analyzing the data that we collected at the clinics, the profile of the average homeowner facing tax sale that we see applying for help and coming to our clinics is a low-income senior who's lived in their home for at least 28 years. And I did include, I have written testimony, and I've included a short kind of synopsis of one particular client of ours. But I just wanted to emphasize some of what the other members of the work group have said. And it's that, really, an ounce of prevention is worth a pound of cure. Attorneys can only do so much once a property has gone to tax sale. And that's because what it comes down to is affordability. Once someone goes to tax sale, the fee, the interest starts adding up. And after a certain amount of time, the purchasers can add fees on top of that. And it just creates an insurmountable amount of money for a homeowner to redeem their property. So really, what we've found time and time again is that the best way to get someone out of tax sale is to make sure they never go in.
Right.
And this tax credit is going to go a very long way to helping to achieve that. It's going to make sure that our homeowners don't need to worry about coming up with the extra money to pay interest and to pay fees. I can tell you that representing homeowners in tax sale foreclosure cases, that's, that's the issue. It's, the legal defenses may buy time, but in the end, if they can't pay the taxes, they lose the house. So this, this bill is desperately needed in Baltimore City, and I urge you to, to support the bill as we do. Thank you.
Thank you, colleagues. Thank you. Marceline White.
Good afternoon, Chairman Stokes, members of the committee. My name is Marceline White, and I'm the Executive Director of the Maryland Consumer Rights Coalition, MCRC. And MCRC advances fairness and justice for Maryland consumers through research, education, and advocacy. I also stand here today as the coordinator of the Baltimore Homeownership Preservation Coalition and another member of the Tax Sale Work Group. We're here in strong support of the city supplement, and we urge you to adopt a favorable position on the bill. I just want to make a few quick points. As my colleagues have talked about, this tax credit provides an infusion of funds to struggling homeowners, and for so many, really makes the difference between whether or not they are able to save their home or whether they lose it to tax sale. It also provides an important supplement to people on fixed incomes who are not at risk of tax sale foreclosure. But as we know, for so many older adults in our city, they've been living on fixed incomes. And one life incident, a medical bill, some kind of higher energy bill than they were expecting can throw them off track. And this kind of supplement can provide them with important funding to increase their safety net so that they don't fall into tax sale foreclosure, or they don't have to make choices between whether to pay their electricity or other bills that month. It also helps these homeowners, not only those in tax lien foreclosure. We know that homeownership is an important asset-building strategy, particularly in Baltimore City. It's a way for people to increase wealth and to pass wealth from one generation to another. So losing these homes not only affects the individual, but it affects the next generation behind them. And we know that what we've seen, and the support you've had we greatly appreciate, is that people have lost their homes to tax sale foreclosure. They've lost all the equity. These are people who've done the right thing. They've worked hard all their lives. Many of the people that our colleagues have worked with have lived in their home for 25 years or more, and they lose all of their equity. We can do something about that today. I want to just mention briefly a couple of things in response to the Department of Finance supplement to provide additional information. As President Young mentioned, many counties throughout the state already have these kind of supplements. And I think it's high time that Baltimore City become another one to have this. These other cities, these other counties have been able to implement these supplements. You know, although they are complex easily, I don't feel like this would be too burdensome or complicated for Baltimore City to also take on. And we can certainly draw from the strength of other counties around us in terms of how they implemented these programs. And then finally, just looking at the cost, I think we need to take a longer-term view of the cost and benefits of these programs. We know that reducing foreclosures, particularly for older adults, has important short and long-term implications. There was a 2005 study that found that one foreclosure can impose up to $34,000 in direct cost on local government agencies. And this includes inspection, court actions, cost on local government agencies, and this includes inspection, court actions, police and fire department efforts, potential demolition, unpaid water and sewage, and trash removal. So, if you think about that cost of losing these homes to tax lien foreclosure, I think those costs certainly need to be reflected as well in the analysis. And then finally, another study found that a foreclosure can result in as much as an additional $220,000 in reduced property value and home equity for nearby homes. Many of the places that are facing tax lien foreclosure are in neighborhoods that are already struggling and that we're hoping to raise up and improve and support, and having these kinds of vacancies and losses to tax lien foreclosure can also affect all of the houses around them. So, for all of these reasons, we urge a favorable report, and I'm happy to take any questions.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Dan Ellis.
Council President Young, thank you for introducing this legislation. Councilman Stokes, thank you for your cosponsor. Councilwoman Holton, we appreciate your support as well of this bill. There are a number of items I'd like to clarify regarding the proposed bill and the testimony that's been provided by some of the departments. The homeowner's property tax credit limits how much taxes a household can pay based on their income. It's not a rebate that goes to the homeowners. It simply says if you're earning less than a certain number of dollars, it caps how much taxes you will pay. When the state issues that, uses that program, they reimburse the local jurisdiction for the lost tax revenue based on the assessed value. What the piggyback will provide is an additional tax credit from the city. The range of the tax credit will be between $40 and $380, depending on the household income of the, of the local household. According to the letter from the Department of Finance, last year, there were 6,256 properties which received, which, where, which received the credit where the homeowner had resided in the property for at least 10 years. If every single one of those properties had a resident who was 62 years old or older, and therefore eligible for this credit, the total cost of all of them receiving the maximum credit of $380 would be $2,367,400. So, the idea that's being set forth in the letter that it will cost $8 million is not something that squares with the bill and the legislation as it's introduced. It's also important to note, 13 other jurisdictions around the state already have supplemental local tax credits that are administered by the state. It is done as part of the same application for the state program, and therefore doesn't require an additional application or a lot more additional work. The state basically has set up the system to do the work for us as part of the collection process. It will, it will mean that there is a reduction in taxes for the city, but it's not going to exceed that $2.3 million number if everybody got the credit from last year. If half of those households, because we know of many households which are younger than 62, who do receive the state credit, which has no restrictions for age, if half of them, you're looking at between 1.1 and 1.2 million dollars. So, the cost to the city, there is a cost to the city, but it's not an $8 million cost. It's also important to note that the cost of just one homeowner losing their home, to then have to have support from the social service network for senior housing and all the other supports that go into that is substantial, and that just a handful of people being impacted adversely by not receiving this credit would be very few in order to offset the cost of the program. So, we therefore encourage you to favorably report this. We applaud the efforts of Council President Young and all of his colleagues for co-supporting, for supporting this effort, and we ask for a favorable, favorable report by the committee. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ellis. Okay, great. Loretta Jefferson.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening. My name's Loretta Jefferson. I'm a senior citizen living in Brooklyn, Maryland, living on a fixed, low fixed income, and I'm appreciative of the homeowner's tax credit. I'm a client of neighborhood housing, and I'm thankful for the tax credit, the homeowner's tax credit, because it did help me keep my house from going into tax sale. Even though I get the tax sale, the homeowner's tax credit, I still have to borrow money from my family to pay the rest, so whatever tax credit I get to help me to keep from losing my home, I've been in my home for just under 20 years. I'm, I know I shouldn't tell my age. I will be 69 the end of this month, and I, I'm very appreciative for the tax credit, and I look forward to getting it. I hope I can keep getting it and live in my home for the rest of my life. Thank you.
Sure. Thank you. I do have, the committee has received a letter of support from the Greater Baltimore Board of Realtors, Chairman Stokes, members of the Taxation, Finance, and Economic Development Committee. On behalf of the Greater Baltimore, Baltimore Board of Realtors, the testimony presented below is in favor of City Council Bill 16-0627. The bill seeks to add a tax credit for certain individuals who have resided in the city dwelling for at least 10 years or at least 62 years of age and have a combined income of less than $40,000. We believe this is a strong bill that benefits those individuals who have given to the city by living here and paying taxes for at least 10 years. This incentive will encourage more home buyers in the city, thus contributing to the city's revenue. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Vice Chairman, members of the committee, for taking the time to read this testimony and digesting this bill respectfully submitted, Ari Plant, Esquire of the Greater Baltimore Board of Realtors. Are there others who wish to testify? We don't have any others who are signed up. If not, we don't have a quorum this evening of the committee. We do wish this bill to move forward and would like it to move forward at the next City Council meeting, which is June the 6th, I believe it is. And so, prior to that time, we will have a voting session of the Taxation, Finance, and Economic Development Committee. We will also consider the amendments that have been brought to us by financing, and so we will recess this particular hearing at this time until a date certain. We will give 48 now, 48 hours notice prior to reconvening, so that you will be able to continue. Okay. I was just discussing with the President, we probably will have a voting session the Thursday before June 6th, but again, we will give ample notice of that. So, at this time, we're, thank you all for coming. I suppose I ask you to check area around your seat to make certain that you have everything that you brought with you. We'll be closing the room shortly. I ask everyone to exit promptly to the first floor main entrance. Thanks, everyone, and we are now in recess. Thank you.